Welcome to the November 7th Board of Mayor and Alderman Work Session. I'm going to ask Alderman, Vice Mayor Dorothy Small, to open us in prayer and then we'll get into our agenda.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you as we come into this day to conduct the city's business. We ask, Lord, that you be with those who be in this meeting as we put you ahead of everything. Lord, protect those that are protecting us and give us the wisdom and knowledge to do as we shall for all. And it is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Our first item is review of the October 3rd 19 work session minutes. Does anybody have any additions or corrections? If not, we'll let those stand. We'll go into our department reports, Public Works. Mr. Plunkett.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Parkland Drive is in wait. Brookway is set to go out and bid about March. I don't know how they're going to back the drive and get the clothes.
And then Third Avenue.
Third Avenue is starting. We're working on this. It'll be going in two weeks.
Yeah. Okay, great. Anything else you have?
No.
Okay. Thank you. We have several permits under police this month versus carriage house permit for the Host of Christmas Pass for 11/9/19. The, I think they were going to do some, several events like wall climbing and have an area.
Yes, sir. They're going to block off the area in front of their new building. And even though the board will not be able to take formal action until after the fact, unless there were no objections, the chief and I will want to go ahead and authorize this. And then we'll ask you all to ratify the approval at the Tuesday meeting.
Everybody okay with that? All right. Next is City of Fayetteville Christmas Parade, December 7th. This is annual event. And if everybody's okay, we'll carry that on to Tuesday. Silent reflection walk permit. This is actually for next year, for September 27th, 2020, for those that went. That was a very powerful testament for suicide awareness and those we've lost in the last year or two. So they have a permit well ahead of time for that event for next year. So if that's okay, we'll take that forward.
Mayor.
Yes, yes.
Would change your on that permit the time? He's got the event start time is six. It would actually be 5:30.
Yes, and I think that's on our iPads. Thank you, Chief. The last thing here, we have UT Forensic Academy Training. One of our staff on the Police Department's retiring. He's our forensic officer, Chief Howell. You want to explain briefly?
I'm willing to. In order to have one of my officers to attend the UT Forensic Academy, I can pay for it out of the drug fund. The problem I run into is the meals during the 10-week period. I cannot pay that out of the drug fund. What I'm asking for is approval of $28 to get him through 10 weeks of this session.
Twenty-eight hundred.
Twenty-eight hundred, excuse me.
So, yes, and this is a 12-week program?
Ten weeks.
Ten-week program.
Ten weeks.
And Constantine is the one?
Yes, the cost is going to be, it depends on when the application gets processed. If we beat the time, it'll be 10:5. If not, I believe it'll be 11:00. Going to 5:00.
Yep. But Constantine's the one we're sending.
That is correct.
That's right. Is everybody okay with us taking this to Tuesday?
I have a question, Mayor. Scott, you were going to get together some numbers and make sure that we had some money somewhere that might get covered this, is that?
Yes, ma'am. And we've not done the report yet, but we do have money because of vacancies in offices that we can shuffle the money around in other travel areas.
Okay. So if we do that, do we need to take a vote on this?
No, we can take it out.
Okay.
Bottom line is how we focus on it so we can be able to find the 2,800.
That's just point of information. Chief Howell, do you have anything else?
Yes.
Okay. Fire Department, Chief Alderman.
Good morning. Just a couple of things of note. This morning, I'd like to just draw attention to this past month, on October the 25th, we had a structure fire. Most people probably know about it by now. Over on Adder Street, it was a total loss as far as the housing or the structure was and pretty much most of the interior belongings. There was stuff outside in sheds and stuff that was able, we were able to protect the area. But the area of note is there, there was a family of seven in that house and an eight-year-old and a six-year-old who had gotten up to get ready for school, a little head of the parents, luckily. It was in their bedroom that the fire had originated, their space heater. And they alarmed everyone in the house. They were able to get everyone out of the house successfully, including a one-year-old baby that was also sleeping. Parents were admittedly said that they had no clue that the kids were beating on their door and woke them up. So essentially, those two children are responsible for, in my eyes, saving all seven people out of that home. I personally would like the City of Fayetteville to consider maybe a proclamation of community heroes or something to that effect for those two children. I thought about how I can, from the fire department aspect, kind of award these two children and make them maybe honorary firefighters at the Fayetteville Fire Department. And just in some of our cleaning and things like that around and cleaning up efforts at the fire station, I found some old panels that are out of date. And I feel like I want to give two of them or each of them a helmet from the fire department and make them honorary firefighters of the fire department with some sort of city proclamation.
Sure. Also, I've had some just requests on Howell to help that family that lost everything. And I think the last I saw of the Red Cross was trying, do you have any update on?
I don't have any updates. Of course, we worked very well that morning with Fayetteville PD. Sergeant Mark Brown took the report and actually made the first call with the Red Cross while the family was standing out there because we were fighting a fire. And he was able to get them in. Of course, I think the elementary school put them up in a hotel for a few days. And at this time, I'm not even sure what their location is, if they're still in that hotel. I have contact information that I totally might be getting in touch with them. So I'm not sure yet on that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Do you have anything else to report this month?
The only other thing I would like to report on is our new turnout gear that the Council approved, the board approved, has been ordered. Firefighters were outfitted. Their award was given to American Emergency Response Training, and they have fitted all firefighters, and the gear should be coming in by the end of November.
Thank you. We'll go to Parks and Recreation. Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Our annual Halloween hackens this year was a huge success. We added the trinket trees to it, and it turned out to be a great event. Everybody seemed to be very pleased with it. I think we had about 20 different vendors off our organization volunteer set up. So we thought that was a big success. Our Trail of Tears we come up with this year, the opening night, we had, in two hours, we had like 104 people through it, which we had to put it off because of weather. But the next weekend, we had about another 100. So we was very happy with that. We're having a CPR class Saturday, November 16th at Direct Center. It's from 9:00 till 3:00 p.m. And our light-up ceremony for Bright Lights Infested Night will be December 6th at 6:30. Our annual Christmas parade will be December 7th. And this year, I've made contact with Adam Cormick at Fayetteville High School, and he's supposed to get back tomorrow. We'll need to confirm. But I've asked the Fayetteville High School football team to do a memory of Tate Tooten as far as for grand marshal. That's my report.
You also want to mention the extra outlets you have now at Stone Bridge?
Yes, sir. We added six different stations, I think with four plugs, a station around the interior of the park, around the stage and everything. So that way at events, people have electricity. We've got them beside events. That way people can plug their phones up, whatever. We've done some other just, I guess, improvements around the pavilions, adding more plugs and getting everything up to code.
And how many trees do you have?
Right now, I think we have 22 spoke forward. And this year, we've upped it to 50, which I feel will help that pretty easily.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thanks so much. We'll go to Plan Codes.
Mayor, Christie Gentry is in Economic and Community Development Training. This will be her last class of the month, and she will start working on her capstone project. And she'll be able to finish up and become the Certified Economic and Community Development Director of certification in 2020. And she's also provided some information. She's working on the transition of the building permit process over to our Building Codes Inspector, E-MAD. And they cannot complete it in October as hoped because of the various activities, mainly the downtown master plan took up a lot of time in October. But they're working on that very well. Also, she wanted to mention McDonald's has applied for a permit to do a complete remodel of their store. And so that'll just be another activity out on Huntsville Highway. You have Speedway under construction. You have Rex BBQ under construction. You have the remodel and expansion of the Lost Tro House restaurant, which will be in the old Buffalo Wild Wings. So a lot of activity going on in the Planning and Codes Department. She has also set a goal to make subdivision regulations a major priority this winter to present to the board for approval, hopefully in early spring, late winter, early spring. And just wanted to take this opportunity to also talk about some of the great work coming out of that department. Again, they're staying so active with all these various projects. But E-MAD, for example, has been helping oversee Phase 1 of the Greenway construction. Just been doing an exceptional job. You see the new decorations out on the square that's went up. Lenis has helped coordinate that through the Parks and Recreation, just an exceptional team effort. And we're receiving a lot of compliments on the new wreaths and bowls and banners. And just a lot of great activities happening in that department and throughout the other departments.
Yeah, that renovation of McDonald's came through Planning Commission this past month, and Vice Mayor and I can state that it's going to be up to date with the kiosks that you see where you go in and even out in the drive-through. They're out doing some upgrades. So it'll be, it'll be a state-of-the-art up-to-date McDonald's one day. But the person that came to present doesn't think that they'll fully close during the time period. They're going to work around, maybe sometimes only the drive-through will be open, maybe sometimes the front will be open. But they don't expect to fully close it. It's not like a tear-down and rebuild. So, thank you, sir. All right, we'll go.
That department has, what, three people working out of it?
Yes, sir.
So, okay. So it takes a lot of teamwork in that department?
Absolutely.
Is that teamwork working like it's supposed to be working? Everything's good?
Yes, sir. You know, Christie, of course, is a coordinator. And she is doing a wonderful job. We still have some issues like with the transitioning certain duties, but we're working through it and moving forward.
So everything is the way it should be?
Yes, sir. And going to get better.
Okay. Thank you. IT, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I really have to report this month is with our payroll system. We're in our final month of testing. We've got to get through Fire Department and Police Department. They've got just a few little issues that we need to work through. And Adrian has been working very diligently with these two departments to make sure we can get through this month. But our plan is to go live in December with payroll.
Great. Jerry, I'll ask the questions on that.
Yeah, yeah.
I've noticed of some emails that came out, and I didn't attend the meeting, but emails that came out. There's been some meetings on this mapping agreement we've got. How's that?
The Azure Agreement.
Yeah, that's a deal. Where are we at on that?
We met with Ernie and called a meeting of all the users that are using the software. Bill Newman came with that. And I think we had Lincoln County Public Works Department that had came, and I think Nancy Harris over at Planning and Codes, and Eddie came to that, and Christie came. And we just discussed the usage that we're using, that software, and is it, is it something that we want to continue and be involved in? And, because there's some other software that I would really like to move into for Planning and Codes that's suited just for what they need for mapping and permits and so forth like that. So long story short, we kind of talked together, and Bill Newman had said if the city's not using it as much as a county, that they shouldn't pay as much. And so he's in agreement that if we can get through one more year than with the county, that they like to cut us down to just using it, the cost would be one-third instead of a half of what we're using it for.
Okay. Another, and I should have asked this to Richard, and I didn't think of it, but both of you can respond if you want to. On the digital radios that we're going to?
Yes, sir.
I've heard through other avenues that the city and the county together, once all those digital radios gets in use, I've heard how much better it's going to be, you know, the service and all, once all that. I've also, I've also kind of heard that we would be one of the bigger users of digital radios because it's kind of, kind of new. Is that kind of right? Is that, are we looking at a whole lot better upgraded services when we get through?
Personally, I think that question is still out.
Okay.
Till we get it up and going and see how.
We'll know how it's going to work.
Yes, sir. Because I'm sure there's going to be a lot of adjustments that's going to be made along the way.
But right now, we're on target to get everything ready to go and?
For the city, I would expect if they are through upgrading, we would probably go after the first of the year.
Okay.
By the time we get everything installed.
That's all right.
That's right.
So there's got to be advantages to it, we think.
I would think so.
We hope so.
With digital, yeah, digital is much clearer.
Okay.
The only issue is, you know, you've got just a wave. And so if you get out of range, you don't, it doesn't just start to drop off, it just leaves.
Okay.
But, I mean, far as clarity, it's much clearer.
Well, as far as range goes, we don't get too far out, and we don't get very far out most times, so. Well, I just kind of want to see how this is going. I know it's been going on a few months.
Yes, sir.
Sounds like it's coming together pretty good. Sounds like it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry. Under Finance, we have two items under here that came through Finance Committee the other day. First is the Fayetteville City School Budget Amendment of $90,500, both dealing with food service equipment, is that they need to do in a purchase of a freezer door replacement. So this is our standard, normal housekeeping we need to take to the meeting and approve. Everybody, everybody good with that?
Yeah.
The next was Britt Dye and Kim Posey came over from FPU. They're doing electrical system refunding of bonds, a 3.12 million bond issue that was done years ago that would save $109,000. And they explained it, and it does not extend the term of the bond. The bond would end in 2024, as the original one would. So we did, their board approved it.
Right. I just appreciate Britt and Kim looking for ways to save the city money. And as Michael mentioned, I think it's $109,000 that it's going to save, which is a good chunk of money. So it's a, it's a good deal, what they've come up with, and a good thing for the city. We still take that Tuesday to a vote.
Stacy, you have anything else? Under Administration, Adrian, we spoke in Finance the other day about the ADA Transition Plan, the company that's been working on this. We had budgeted, Mr. Collins said, $55,000 in this current budget, and they went out. And one of the things they had left to do, they've done all, can you come up for a second? They've done all the buildings in the, in the city, and they were, they did an estimate on sidewalks, which they originally estimated about 250. But now they've discovered it's going to take, we have actually, for 300-plus sidewalks, they need to walk, measure, do everything. And they're requesting an additional $16,000 for this task.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Above the 55, or we think it's above the 55 we've budgeted. Is that correct, Mr. Collins?
And I did receive a detailed estimated budget that we provided for you two, so I hope that helped answer some of the questions about the $16,000.
Yeah, it came in like a little over 15, between 15 and 16.
Yes, sir.
And so they'll come back in spring of 2020 and give us the results of all of what they've reviewed of what we currently have as ADA compliant and what's not that needs to be ADA compliant.
Yes, sir. So what they'll do is they'll take each facility, and it'll have its own set of spreadsheets, and it'll go through exactly each thing saying that, for example, this door isn't ADA compliant, what it needs to be compliant, and then an estimated cost. And then we'll take it from there for a timeline for the budget. And that's what overall the state wants to see, is that the communities are actively working on a transition plan to bring ADA compliant in all of their facilities.
Has there been, have you heard any discussion from the state that there will be any grant opportunities involved since the state wants the communities to do that? Have you heard anything about grants that would be specifically for?
Community Development Partners has provided us with some information, and I just didn't get into a lot of detail with them on that. But I believe there, there are several opportunities that we'll be able to take part of, depending on the project and what all it entails.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So the request is for $16,000 budget amendment?
Yeah. So that's led me to it. You don't have any choice.
It's EMA, so we don't have to do it.
Mr. Collins, you have anything else under Administration?
Yes, sir. Just to touch briefly on a couple of issues. The Phase 1 Greenway is continuing on, but this week has been challenging because they're preparing the foundation for the bridge. And they had to dig down 18 feet to the bedrock. And when we showed up Monday, it was underwater because it runs right next to Tanyard Branch feeding into Norris Creek. And it's been underwater all week. So they've been at a standstill, although they're preparing other elements of the project. And next week, they will be starting at the Stone Bridge Park, doing the ADA parking and sidewalks inside the park itself, and then working back from the park with the Greenway Trail in hopes that the water will receive. We're reaching out to TVA and trying to get a schedule of when the water may be low enough for them to get that foundation board. But other than that, they're proceeding as scheduled. Phase 2, we're still, it's out of T-Dot's hands, and now pretty much with the Governor's Office to get an easement signed that will allow us to go to bid on that. And we've reached out trying to find out what the delay is because it's been in their hands about six weeks, and all it needs is signatures. So we're working on that. And another major project we're working on is the William D. Jones Boulevard Surface Transportation Block Grant Improvement. Meetings with some T-Dot officials were not as productive as we'd hoped. So we have a November 20th meeting scheduled with the Deputy Commissioner, Chief Engineer, Paul Diggs. And we hope we can get additional funding to do the road as it should be done. With the money available, we could do some repairs. But we've been working on this 13 years now. So we feel that T-Dot should allow us to do it as it should be, to make it safe for our student drivers, our buses, all the residents that use it, in addition to the commercial trucks that use it on both ends of William D. Jones. So hopefully by December, I'll have something positive to report to you on moving forward with that project. And lastly, just a little bit of administrative housekeeping. We've started process now, I mean, we're constantly monitoring the budget, of course. But we're starting a process now where every quarter, each department head and their team members will sit down with the finance and administration team and go over the budget to see ways to improve our productivity and cost savings. That's all I have to report at this time, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions for Scott. There was an opening with parts and wrecks for maintenance worker, I think, and it was supposed to close on October the 17th. Has that position been filled?
Interviews are ongoing, is my understanding.
So interviews are scheduled, correct? Okay. Good deal. I just had an applicant contact me, so I said, I don't know, I will check and find out. But, you know, if we could do that in a more timely manner, if it closed October the 17th, and this is almost November the 17th, you know, we don't want to lose these applicants to another employer because we're always complaining that we can't get people to apply for these city jobs. So I think we need to schedule these interviews in a more timely manner. Also, one other question on that dress codes. I know we, we talked several months ago about a dress code going in place. How, where do we stand on that situation right now?
We've had discussions on it, but we have not formally sat down and detailed out any information at this time.
Do you know when that might go into place?
It's currently with all the other projects going on, it's a little lower on the priority list. But if the board feels strongly about it, we can bump it up.
Well, I know some issues have come up before and discussions made, you know, and if we expect them to follow those rules, I think there needs to be something in the employee handbook about a dress code. If you expect them to follow a dress code, then it needs to be a written dress code. That's my opinion.
Yes, ma'am.
And one other thing is on printed material. You and I have spoken before, and you told me that there was something in place about printed material before it goes out and represents our city. Is that still?
Yes, we announced it at the department head meeting, that all promotional materials comes through Administration.
Okay. So anything going out of a department and the, and the department heads have been notified that printed material?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do. I would like for the board to consider a resolution this coming Tuesday honoring our City High School football team. This is the first year that they've gone undefeated. They tend to know. They won that title on the field. That team doesn't have anything to do with whatever's going on. They just went out there and played football. That's all they did, is play football. Didn't have anything to do with what went on. And I would like for the, us to, at the very least, to honor them for that 10-0 season that they've won on the field with a resolution.
I definitely support that idea. I think it's great.
I agree.
I'd be with you.
I agree.
All right, great. Anybody else have anything else?
I just have a question for the fire chief. Talking about the turnout gear, I need to understand, this gear, from what I've read, expires. Explain that to me.
The NFPA says that any kind of structural turnout gear, helmets, gloves, no-mix hoods, the soaps, pants, loops, anything that has a date on it, it's no different than, for instance, a drug that you carry on an ambulance. If it's got a date on it, it's got an expiration date. And it is 10 years by NFPA standard. It's met its lifespan. It's been enough virus that there may be cancer-causing carcinogens in it and things like that. And they're saying it's no longer acceptable to make entrance into a structural fire or to a hazardous atmosphere. So 10 years is the lifespan.
Okay. We just replaced all that, all that equipment. So for 10 years from now, it should be expiring again. Did we have any life left on any of the equipment that you replaced?
I think when I reported the last time, somebody asked me the dates on it, and I think that they had, some of the gear had about two years of a date left on it. But at the same time, that is the date for, if it sits on a shelf, pretty much. You know, they're saying after 10 years, you know, degradation of materials, things like that, you don't want to use it. But these guys train in that gear, they go out and work in it. I saw a couple of them on a structural fire the other night, and, you know, some of them look really ratty and, you know, they get irreparable almost. So, you know, that is a standard of 10 years. But some of them have some life. I think we can, you know, manage to- I think we can, you know, manage to a couple more years out of a, a few pairs, uh, here and there. Um, there's no really way of telling until we get the new guys, after all the guys in the new gear, we'll recoup all that stuff, we'll get it all washed up, cleaned up, see what the best stuff is. Probably have to retire some at that point and dispose of it, and some that we pass down to our reserves, uh, until we're able to, you know, completely overhaul those systems.
Okay, thank you.
Last thing I would say is this, this is the big weekend coming up. Host of Christmas Pass starts five o'clock Friday night on the other side of the courthouse with the lighting of the tree, um, in honor of, uh, former Mayor Elgin Brooks. And then all day Saturday, so everybody come out, um, and support our nonprofits and have a good time. Otherwise, we'll see you Tuesday night. Have a good day.